I'm going to call the meeting's order. We didn't have a closed session, so we'll go on with the regular roll call, please. Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Huer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Powers.
Here.
We'll take silent prayer and the flag salute. I hope that you will include in your prayers today everyone that's fighting all the fires all over California.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the video statement. Okay, I know you do. Would you please read the video statement, Tina? And welcome, Tina, to your first official city council meeting.
Thank you. This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, July 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 22nd at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Tina. Well done. Is there any agenda approvals, additions, and/or deletions, council? Okay, then we'll go right on into the presentations. And the first subject is Emily Boyd's going to introduce our new information technology manager.
Good evening, Mayor Powers, members of the council. Mr. Marlin, would you step up here, please? I'm happy tonight to introduce that we've hired Willis Marlin as our new IT manager. He has 25 years of experience in technology. His experience includes designing robots, installation and maintenance of law enforcement, mugshot crime scene systems, and managing school districts' technology departments. He and his wife Shannon live in Discovery Bay, and they have one son who lives in Mesa, Arizona. Later this month, they will be celebrating 29 years of marriage and 39 years of being together since they were in high school. When not emerged in technology, Willis is a family man and an avid outdoorsman who enjoys fishing, hunting, boating, camping, four-wheeling, and the ultimate quest, prospecting for gold. He actually has a claim. We believe Willis is a great addition to our team.
Want to say a few words?
Thank you for the introduction. I'm looking forward to the challenge. And as I spoke with Eugene earlier today, the, there's definitely a challenge, and I enjoy the challenge, and that's kind of what we're here for. Making sure that we can bring Galt into the 21st century with the emerging technology and existing and current, and, you know, providing that service out to the different departments within, within the city. So I'm looking forward to being on board. It's been a, it's been a fun three weeks so far.
Well, welcome aboard. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeff Ramis. Where are you, Jeff? He's going to introduce us to the new fire chief and the recreation administrator. Woo-hoo. Hi, guys.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Powers, council members. Jeff Ramis, general manager, Casuna's Community Services District. Good to be here tonight for the benefit of the audience. We are the providers of the Parks and Recreation Services in Elk Grove and the Fire and Emergency Medical Services in Elk Grove and here in Galt as well. So, we've had, have had, and will have several changes at the CSD. Tracy Hansen, our former fire chief, she retired effective June 30th. And so Mike McLaughlin is our new fire chief. And so any questions fire-related, he's your man. Going forward, been on the job for three weeks, and it feels like, feels like yesterday, huh, Mike? I have Maureen here tonight. Maureen is our Parks and Recreation Administrator. She succeeded our administrator who retired in February. The reason she's here tonight is because I, myself, am retiring in November. And so, yeah, so we're having a complete change at the, the leadership of Elk Grove. And Maureen is, will be the, is the incoming general manager. So she will take over my duties effective November of this year. So we wanted to introduce our, our new staff and fire chief and general manager. We've enjoyed a great working relationship with the city of Galt, and I know that will not change. We will continue to, to work great together. And as a matter of fact, I think on Thursday, council members, you're all invited to our training facility. Don't worry, we won't have you carry too much hoes or rappel down the, the training tower, but I think you guys will, will find it very enjoyable and informative. So again, thank you very much for having us here, and I'll see if these folks want to say any words.
Actually, yes, I would like to say I'm very much looking forward to working with you and your staff going into the future. I enjoy my time at the CSD already in the matter of a few short months, and I'm looking forward to a very long future with them. And so, thank you. Thank you for having us this evening.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's, it's truly an honor. I've had the pleasure of working with the Casuna CSD, with the fire department, for the past three and a half years. So while I'm not native to the community, I am in-house and have the familiarity of working with many of you over the past several years. I'm, you know, very fortunate. I feel truly blessed. I feel like I've won the lottery to be able to be a part of this community and be a part of this organization, and I look forward to the years to come. And I'm sorry, Maureen, I guess since you'd be my boss, I shouldn't have made her speak first, so... But anyway, I very much look forward to seeing you on Thursday. I look forward to the years we have ahead and the development of wonderful things together. So thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations, too, Jeff, on your retirement.
Thank you.
Yes. We're going to miss you. Okay, now Lahime. You're going to give us your report to the city council.
My name is Angel Morgan, and I'm the secretary to the board for Lahime of Galt. With all our board and volunteers, wave, everybody. Many who are here tonight, we would like to thank the city of Galt for choosing our organization to receive a grant. Lahime has been helping the needy since 2005, but our founder Gloria Stemler has been doing it far longer. She's here tonight if you have any questions for her. We have purchased a new self-threading serger at a great discounted price from Country Sewing in Elk Grove. We have serviced all eight of our sewing machines. We have made blankets, hats, scarves, and scarves for the Farisite School Outreach Program again this year. We gave handmade items to the Farisite PTA for raffles. We made Afghans hats, scarves, and hygiene kits for the homeless, hats for the veterans in Sacramento, 10 hats for the veterans in Shasta County, 77 hats for Sutter cancer patients, bags for Vacation Bible School, 43 lap quilts for Golding Living Center, 30 bibs for the Galt Extravaganza's pie-eating contest, but they didn't get used because it rained us out. Eight adult bibs for Meals on Wheels. We regularly donate our excess yarn and craft items to the Galt Adult Community Training Program, to Galt High School art teachers, as well as to the CETA program in Galt. We made 13 bonnet, oh, excuse me, 15 bonnets and 16 skirts for the New Hope Elementary School simulation called Apple Valley School. We gave quilts, fleece blankets, pillowcase, hats, and scarves to parents by choice, it's a foster organization, and 30 pillowcases to Mary Graham Hall in Stockton. We have contributed over 459 squares and other quilt tops and pieces to the Horizon Quilters Group for their community projects. We have baskets, we make baskets of handmade items for local nonprofits to use in their raffles. Thank you again to the city of Galt for choosing Lahime and making this all possible. The city has asked for new projects, something we have not done before. And this has stumped our volunteers and board alike. We sew, we quilt, we crochet, and we loom. Crafters have been coming up with new designs regularly for years, but we are still sewing, quilting, crocheting, and looming. Lahime did not apply for next year's grant because we heard what you asked, and as we sat around our board table amid fabric, thread, and yarn in a rainbow of colors and hues, we had nothing new to add. Lahime has been serving our community in what we do best. We hope that in, by the 2018 grant deadline, we will have come up with a new project that will work, that will spark the interest of the city council. Lahime has many hearts and hands working toward our community goals, so I would like to introduce you to Melody Lamson, our board president.
Hello. I want to say thank you for everything that you've done for Lahime in the past and helping us to continue all the projects that we've had. I want to point out that more than 15 million tons of used textile waste goes to our landfills each year in the USA. This is 80 pounds of used clothing per person per year. It costs taxpayers $45 per tonne to dispose of it. The breakdown of used textiles in landfills significantly impacts greenhouse gases. This breakdown from one household is comparable to driving one modern car 6,000 miles. I could quote statistics all day, but I'm not here for that. I'm here to tell you that Lahime makes a difference. Right here in Galt, the idea of Lahime is spreading. Lahime has linked up with at least three churches in the area, the Latter Day Saints, they do a lot of fleece blankets, St. Joseph's, which bring us toiletries, and we make the bags to put them in for homeless. And specifically, that is the Daughters of Isabella through St. Joseph's. Aunt Horizon Church was, puts together quilts for us. We, we put, do the squares and provide the fabric. They actually assemble the quilts, and we put a quilt on every bed at the Drug Rehab Program in Harold River City. We've, we're also making quilts now for hospice. We've done over 100 bibs for our own convalescent hospital, where when people can no longer feed themselves, you don't have to change your clothes anymore. You can just take off a bib, throw that in the wash. Saves a lot of time and trouble for the people that work there. The Lowdy Quilters Guild will soon join forces with us, and people come from all over Sacramento to visit Lahime. We have a reputation. We're, we're getting out there. And they even come from out of state, and we've even had people as far away as Lincoln, Lasserville, just come here to see Lahime. In our own little way, Lahime is helping to put Galt on the map, whether it's through recycling, fabric, or yarn, whether it's getting people to work together for the good of not just Galt, but for the good of people. Lahime is proving that we can make beautiful things out of stuff that normally gets thrown away. And that quilt, that's why we brought it, because that's an example. That's our latest one. Everything on the top of that quilt would have been in a trash heap because it was scraps and mill ends. The inspiration fabric was literally mill ends. They just, those people just throw that stuff away. We happened to get it. It was great. Anyway, thank you so much.
Yeah, I really think you guys ought to be commended for all the great work you do here for the city. You're a great bunch of gals, and Gloria, you're one in a million for starting this all out. So thank you guys very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at public comment. Do you mind reading that please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk.
And we have one, Sunny Gilstrap. And can you just restate your name, please, and say if you live in the city of Galt?
Yes, Sunny Gilstrap, and I live within the city of Galt.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Powers and council members. My name is Sunny Gilstrap again. My family and I call Galt California home. We have three daughters, Brooke, 17, again, attending Cal Poly next year, and Riley and McKenna, both four, who are attending TK next year and graduated from City Tots just a few months ago. We had no idea that almost four years ago, our lives would be forever changed with two words, Kiari Malformation. I'm here to ask if the council would be interested in supporting a charitable organization that has become part of our family. You see, when our youngest twin, she was born one minute after, was born, she came into the world fighting. She fought to survive, and she nailed it. About eight months later, her pediatrician was concerned about fluid in the brain, and so we were told you need an MRI. So we took Riley in. Luckily, no fluid. However, I was told that my baby had Kiari. I was told over the phone, a first-time mom with two newborn babies at home, and a doctor with 40 years' experience told me to write it down, told me how to spell it, and he said I've seen two cases in my entire career, Riley's number two. I did what any mom would do. I cried, and then I got to work. I started to research. We were referred to an amazing neurosurgeon at UC Davis, which is amazing because Riley had brain surgery on April 24th of this year, and she's doing amazing. We found conquer Kiari that first year. And at our first walk, we found that there were so many others struggling with the same thing. And we found that we were a story of hope, because most people went 20 years without a diagnosis. My baby was diagnosed at eight months old. She is their hope. She's the hope for their children. So, our first walk, we found so many people, and unfortunately also found out, even talking to our own doctors, most people in the medical community don't even know how to pronounce Kiari. We would like to be a part of changing that. Last year, I was able to organize the local walk. It was held at Elk Grove Regional. We had over 150 people last year. We're expecting over 200 this year. We currently have Lowdy Health, BMW Drilling, F&amp;M Bank, Gladiator School, Alpine Orthopedic, Woodbridge Fire, and the Rotary Club of Smith Valley, who are sponsoring our walk this year. We're thankful to Galt's Roundtable Pizza, and on September 5th, please don't cook dinner. Go there, bring in a little ticket. You can catch us on our Facebook page, get some pizza, and 20% of those proceeds will go to Kiari Awareness as well. On July 5th, Riley's story was shared in the Elk Grove Citizen and the Galt Herald, discussing her fight with Kiari. Riley is a brain surgery survivor and a Kiari warrior. We're asking for your help in promoting our event to help raise awareness for Kiarians. Anything, nothing is too big or too small. Elk Grove is proclaiming September Kiari Awareness Month. They did it last year as well. We're currently asking the state of California to declare September Kiari Awareness Month in the state of California. We're hoping that the city of Galt will do something in return as well. This is our home. A day, a week, a month, light up some purple lights everywhere, anything, just to show your support of, of all of our warriors. And I can tell you, this affects 1 in 1,000 people, and we moved into a brand-new community here in Galt, and within a month, we found out my baby has it and our next-door neighbor has it. So it is more, it's out there more than you would think. This will be my family's fourth year walking with Team Riley Rue and all others suffering with Kiari, and her amazing superhero captain, McKennamoo, her twin sister, and her current best friend. I've been honored to meet so many people, like I've said, with Kiari. I've brought all of the pertinent informations for this year's event. I've given the paperwork already. And as you can see, there are some pictures, some flyers, and you can see Riley there, too. She's kind of cute, kind of usually helps people to say yes. And I'd like to just say thank you very much for allowing us the time to speak and to talk about Kiari and get the cause out there. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure the council will have no problem with getting a proclamation out for you for that month.
Thank you.
And for that day.
Thank you.
Correct, council.
Can you tell us what happens if it's not treated?
There is no cure for Kiari. Surgery is an option for some. We were hoping that Riley could wait until she was a teenager for hers. However, unfortunately, hers, the flow in her brain was so bad that they needed to go in very quickly. So I know people that have had 20 surgeries and still are feeling the effects. It just depends. And the side effects range from migraines, immobility, sometimes paralysis if it's not caught in time, because basically, your skull is too small for your brain. So Riley's brain extended out of her skull and touched her C3 vertebrae. So that can impact a lot of your daily functions. You wouldn't know it if you met her, she'd be jumping up and down right here, but that's all that she's known, so she's fighting through it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're at the information and consent calendar. Could you please read the subjects, please?
Item 1, minutes of the regular meeting of June 20th, 2017. Item 2, receive and file warrants. Item 3, treasurer's report for period ending May 2017. Item 4, award of contract for construction management services related to the industrial water treatment plant, 2016 Deepwell Project Phase 2. Item 5, foreclosure proceedings for 2015-1 reassessment district.
I have a motion to approve.
Move the items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, move by Cruz, second by Campion. Call for the votes.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Huer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Pass 5-0. Okay, now we're at the West Side, the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District Public Hearing, Approval of Engineers Report, and Levelling the Annual Assessments for Fiscal Year 2017-2018.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is the set time and place for our annual public hearings on all three of the city's lighting and landscape districts. It is a prescribed process under state law to continue collecting the assessments through the property tax rolls. And engineers reports that are attached to your packet and available to the public outline the various revenue sources and expenditures and how those are attributable to each parcel within the district. We're going to, at your pleasure, provide a brief PowerPoint that will cover all three districts, and then would recommend that you individually open and close a hearing for each of the three districts.
Okay, perfect.
And Mr. Bill Forrest will make the presentation tonight.
Thank you. There we go. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Bill Forrest with your Public Works Department. We'll start off with the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District 1990-2. This is a map of the district, the highlighted segments. It's mostly on the west side, as indicated, with a couple of parcels on the east side of the freeway. There were no new annexations or, of properties or subdivision of existing properties within the district in the past fiscal year. The assessments are fixed, have not changed since the district's inception in 1990. The typical assessment for a single-family residential parcel ranges, depending on what district it is and the size of the parcel, anywhere from $36.62 to $221.80, again, depending on which benefit zone the parcel lies. The northeast Galt Landscaping Line District. The map is a little hard to see, but this kind of golden highlighted area in the northeast area. There were two annexations of property, and one of those annexations further subdivided into two parcels. The assessments per parcel are again fixed. This is the west side and northeast area. Have not changed since the district's inception, 1990. Typical assessment for a single-family residential parcel ranges from $51.70 to $30, $301.85, again, depending on what benefit zone and the size of your parcel. Lastly, Landscape Lighting District Number 3. We had one annexation and subdivision. It was a two-lot parcel map at the northwest end of Poplar Street, and includes the newer subdivisions that have been developed since 2005, Schmidt Ranch, Creekside 3, Creekside 4, Creekside 2 Unit Number 2, and a small parcel at the corner of Cost and First called Legacy Estates. As mentioned, there was the one annexation and subdivision of the property at the end of Poplar Street. Unlike the other two, the District Number 3 allows a provision for the assessments to be modified based upon a SEEP, Consumer Price Index, and the minimum increase per the engineer's report is 1.5%. Looking at the index for, from January of 2016 to January 2017, the CPI has increased 2.54%. Therefore, the assessment for a single-family residence parcel has increased to $318.66, which represents an increase of $7.90 per parcel from last year. Kind of touching on the future, as mentioned, the west side and northeast area assessments have been fixed since the district's inception in the early 90s. Currently, the west side and District Number 3 both require small operating subsidies to maintain current service levels. That's with several cost reductions undertaken by staff. We have the contract for landscape maintenance and cost allocation and all that. The northeast district, the, the, has a diminishing available fund balance. It goes down every year. It still has some money in it. I've, I've been doing the engineer's reports for 10 years, and for about every 10 years, we can make it, we can make it. And again, we've made it. And staff are developing recommendations regarding the future, what will be the optimal type of district to provide these services for the existing districts, as well as the future areas of the, of the city that will be developing in the near future. And there's several options there, and so like I said, we're exploring with the help of consultants. Just so you know, any proposal to increase the assessment would require formal balloting process, going out to the affected parcels, and having them ballot as to whether they agree or not agree. So that's something to, again, consider in the future if we're going to stick with the existing L&Ls. If we're gonna stick with the existing L and Ls but increase the assessments, we will have to go through that process. As outlined, we'll be conducting separate hearings for each of the three districts. We'll be going in the opposite order of what's indicated. We'll start with the public hearing for the west side, then proceed to the northeast, and then, lastly, district number three. And after the public hearing, each adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report and the levying of assessments for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
So we have quite a few homes that are not in any district?
Fair amount, yes, ma'am.
How many would you estimate?
I would suggest, as a kind of a preliminary guesstimate, that only about a third of the properties within the city are currently within a lighting/landscape district, or these being the large one that virtually all of that development is. West Side, as development continues, sorry, the district number three, as development continues to occur, if we continue to put new development into number three, would continue to grow. We basically are not putting any new properties into the too-older district because of the, sort of, the grandfather status under Prop. two eighteen and the deficit spending. And so we're looking at, is, our lighting/landscape districts, which are Streets and Highways Code-type of district, that have to have strict compliance with Prop. two eighteen, they're limited in the services they can provide. They can't provide any general services. They can't do things such as support our aquatic center. They can't do things such as support roadway deficit spending. So we put some conditions on the newer subdivisions that they would be open to entertaining if the city were to develop a new community facilities district or some other type of financing that would give us a little more flexibility, that they would not oppose that as a condition of approval. And so we're working with finance and council, city manager's office, and a consultant to, sort of, before the large Eastview and those types of new proposals actually get to the final map stage, that we've brought some separate recommendations as to what type of district makes sense moving forward, and that'll come back to council for probably additional study session over the next months ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, council, I'm gonna open up each district for a public hearing, and then after that, if you want to add anything, is that okay with everybody? Okay, Sherri, which one do you want to talk on? Does it matter? Okay, then I'm gonna open the public hearing and call Sherri Daly. Oh, for the west side, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Sherri Daly, and I live in the city limits and was a west-side homeowner for over twenty years, just until recently, actually, and now an east-side homeowner. And I just have some questions to ask about how the financing works for all of this. So a couple of meetings ago, we had a discussion about cost allocation, and we talked about different funds and how much money is basically taken out of those individual funds to help support the general fund, which goes to all sorts of things. And it was disclosed or discovered that too much was being taken out of these special funds to hand back to the general fund. So I thought, wow, that's really not a good thing. So I'm so glad that our new city manager and financial manager have been trying to right that ship. But when you go back and look at it, it particularly impacts these funds. I mean, the northeast area was charging almost eighteen thousand dollars, too much, back to the general fund. That's straight out of taxpayers' money that we get on our tax bill, and then almost twice the amount that the west-side district should have gotten. This cost study, which is an objective source, came out and looked at it and said, no, the cost should have been about thirty-five thousand dollars, and yet the city was collecting sixty-eight thousand dollars out of that special tax fund to go back to whatever the city wants to spend it on. And then district number three was hit three times as much as it should have been having allocated back to the general fund. So I guess my question is, how long has this sort of overcharging been going on? This rationale that there's this rapidly depleting fund, it's rapidly depleting for a reason, it appears, because there were some changes to money that kept being taken out of what should have been for the lighting and landscape districts. And the district that I live in, we've got, and I'm not criticizing staff because they have a diminishing budget. They're cutting costs to keep up with how their fund operates. So I've got broken curbs. A car went through a curb and crashed into a big giant plant. It's been that way for months, and I get it. There's just not the budget there to take care of it. So I would just like an explanation of how we got here and how the taxpayers get paid back. If that money was taken from funds that were supposed to go to lighting and landscape and put back into the city's general budget, or things that I feel the taxpayers didn't ask to be taxed for, then we should know how that happened, and we should know how the taxpayers are getting that money back, not how our services are going to be cut back continually to take care of this rapidly diminishing situation. So I would like to thank our city management for taking care of this. I would like to commend councilmembers who have, who are fiscal conservatives and understand that when you take money from what was allocated for taxpayers to pay for things we need, like our landscaping, that affects our home values, and give it somewhere else, that affects us, and that needs to be taken into consideration when decisions are made. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Want to fill out a sheet, please? Are you, are you speaking on the west one? Okay, all right. I'm sorry, sorry.
It's really good to hear somebody else, Sherri, for doing that. She ought to run for city council next time we got. That's very important, what she just got through telling you.
That was a good promo for two years from now, but okay. Now, anyone else want to speak on west side? Okay, so I'm gonna close that. Counsel? Okay, going to the northeast side, it's open for public comment. Anyone? Anyone? Okay, I'm gonna close that one. Counsel, any, anything? Okay, and then district number three, I'm gonna open for discussion. Dan, when did you want to speak? Just at the end, or what? Did you want to speak?
Not on this subject, no.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right. We'll close that, counsel. Okay, so do we take each of these separately?
Yes.
All righty. Mind reading the recommended action for the first one? I'll take a vote now for the second one.
Mayor, would you like us to respond to the public comments at all?
I said no, I opened it and closed it. There was no response.
Do I have to respond to it?
Would you like staff to respond to Ms. Daly's comments?
Well, we, if, if you want. Do you want?
Well, just a couple of general comments, and then our finance director, who brought the cost allocation plan, might like to speak to specifics. But, so a cost allocation plan is a way that the general fund recovers its costs to support various sewer, water, special districts, other non-general fund entities within the city. So to say that it was overcharging, it was based on a model that was adopted and approved by the city council that was prepared by a consultant using a number of assumptions. As with a light item later on the agenda tonight, we do the same thing with our water sewer rates, our storm drain rates, our connection fees. Every few years, we review and revise and update, and it had been a number of years since the cost allocation plan methodology and assumptions had been visited. And under, under our current city manager and our, our new finance director, it was recommended that we do a new study. It had been a number of years beyond what you'd normally recommend. So the new study was done with some guidance and input on current best practices and current state-of-the-art thinking on appropriate cost allocations. You do the new study, and you get a result. And we recommended that we adopt the consultant's recommendations as a city. That did result in, it's a zero-sum game. The costs stay the same, but how you allocate those back and attribute how much service was required. We went to a different set of measurable metrics, as opposed to sort of time estimates of how much time was being spent, and there were winners and losers. Some funds took a hit, and other funds received a benefit. As was pointed out, the lighting/landscape districts, under the old methodology, were being hit for a larger share, a fair share cost to do that. Now, one could argue, how fair was that? But we tend to look prospectively forward when we do these studies, and so we've taken steps to correct that. And that would sort of be my general comment. And as we get into the rate studies tonight, the rates that have been adopted have served us well, but as new costs, new capital improvement projects, and, and new regulatory environment, new court rulings come, then we adjust our methodology going forward. And you don't look back to undo what you did ten years prior, absent court direction to do so, or legislative direction. You typically fix and correct going forward, and that is what we've attempted to do. And I don't know, Emily, if you'd like to add anything further on that?
Excuse me, just a couple of comments. One is that, just to remind the council that we're not, I've forgotten exactly the term that was used, but we're not subsidizing the general fund from other funds. What we're doing is other funds are reimbursing the general fund for central service costs, and central service costs are accounting and finance and HR and the city attorney and all those kinds of central sort of administrative expenditures that if we get an economy of scale by having those centralized in the general fund. And then other funds, which are basically like little enterprises themselves, pay into that for those central services. And Mr. Winkler actually speaks correctly, is that it isn't a case of, what has occurred is that we reevaluated the plan. We went to a consultant, and we updated the plan. That was a few years out of date, and it had kind of gone off course a little bit. And we changed some of the assumptions, so we developed a new methodology, and these are the new allocated costs that we have now. So I wouldn't characterize it as having been overcharged in the past.
Didn't we just discuss all of this, a couple of?
We did, mayor, and...
Okay. It's a little tricky, that, what we're doing, though, so it takes a little bit of understanding. Okay, I'm sorry that you were interrupted. Would you mind starting again?
Receive a presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District nineteen ninety dash two for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen and related engineer's report. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District nineteen ninety dash two engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Campion and Cruz, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Huer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye, pass five to zero. Now, the second one, please.
Receive a presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and related engineer's report. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Cruz and Lamson, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Huer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye, passes five to zero. Okay, and last but not least?
Receive a presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District number three for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and related engineer's report. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District number three engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Do I have a motion on that? So moved. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, Lamson and Huer, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Huer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye, passes five to zero. Okay, on to the city council meeting of August first, two thousand and seventeen. That's to you, Jean.
Yeah, Mayor, it was council. The council moved the August first meeting from six PM to two PM so we can attend the national night out in review of our agenda items for that meeting. We only have a couple of items that can be moved to the second meeting in August, so staff's recommending that we cancel that meeting for that day so we can focus on our national night out.
Good idea. Do I have, we need a motion for that, correct?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Laura, Huer, and Cruz, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Huer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye, pass five to zero. Okay, what we've all been waiting for, the Public Works wastewater cost of service and rate study workshop. That's to you, Mr. Winkler.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, we're bringing to you tonight, first, in a series of what will likely be several study sessions, workshops, to look at the city's costs of service to provide wastewater in a changing regulatory environment, as well as to look at, you know, what future rates will need to be to remain fiscally solvent and with adequate reserves. Tonight's workshop is first of sort of two workshops, and it will look at the, the user costs and user rates that are necessary to fund the recent twenty-six million dollars of engineering and upgrades that have been done at our wastewater plant to meet regulatory upgrades. It didn't really create any significant additional capacity at the plant. It was to keep operating without having to reduce our capacity or go into either fines or moratoriums on future buildings within the city. So that's, later in August, tentatively, we hope to bring to you sort of the other bookend, which is, and what should new development cost be? And typically, that's done through connection fees as new development occurs. And so that's sort of the other end of the study that Raph Telus, our consultant, is also working on for the city. So we'll be releasing that information in the weeks ahead. So just bear in mind that you're getting the first part of the study, although there are implications within the user fees or some initial one-time allocations of current developer impact fee funding in our Fund fourteen connection fee account to fund its fair share of the phase recent SRF loan improvements upfront to help stabilize rates in the short term for those amounts of capacity that could be attributable to new development. But there will be another component as we look at the connection fees in a couple of meetings from now. So with that, I'd introduce Mark Clarkson, who will be introducing our consultant. Be patient, bear with us. This will be a little longer than normal presentation because we want the council and the public to get some understanding of some of the assumptions and driving factors that are leading to, nobody likes to talk about rate increases, but I think we've been talking for the last four years as we move through this twenty-six-million-dollar project, that at the end of the project, we're gonna have to at least meet the debt service component of that, which is a significant annual additional cost to our sewer enterprise, which means that we need to pass that through to our customers. So, but any further ado, Mark?
Mayor, council. Not yet on that. I've got a story to tell. Little bit of history here. You know, we've been here for a long time. You know, this project's been going on. It was required by the state back seven years ago, two thousand and ten. They directed us, we had to do improvements to our wastewater plant. And, and we didn't know that when we signed that agreement with them, or we signed that little, a permit with them, that it was gonna bring us thirty-five million dollars worth of projects later, SRF funding and everything else to meet certain needs for their, their regulation, most of its regulation, and there was a little bit of money in there thrown in for, for deferred improvements. But it's been a long time. I think... I think, I think the first time I mentioned how much it was going to cost was back in 2012 and I estimated a little over 30 million at that time. But that was excluding the force main, the lift station force main that was a deferred improvement that we also did in this past six years. So, regulation created this problem for us. We had to resolve it. We got the engineers, we've got the accountants, we got the staff, we've got Raf Telus, the financial people. We've had other financial people looking at it. We have environmental documents, planning documents, everything has occurred, plus the construction, as some of you have been out there recently, construction's completed on the, on the, on the major portion, the $26 million. We're doing a $4 million project now to reduce arsenic in our treatment process. But all of that, at least $30 million, is related to regulatory issues. Back about three, three and a half years ago, the council, the city approved going forward and getting a loan from SRF. That's the next big component of this. How are we going to pay this? And at the time, I estimated that it would be around $20 a month per customer, not knowing what the final design was going to be and everything else there. And right now, as you can see in the documents, it's a little bit above $15. And so we've, you know, we've seen this $35 million being shelled out without anything happening with rates in the last seven years. And now we're at the point that we have to do something to keep right, to keep moving forward. So that's enough of my story. I would like to tell you all the good things that are going out there, but you guys have seen a lot of it. And we have a good crew and we have a lot of good people on it. About eight or nine months ago, we contracted with Raf Telus Financial Consultants and Habib Isaac and Andrea Bowling are part of the group that has put a lot of the documents together. And what I encourage you, you have any questions while we're doing this, ask them. One of us will be able to dance around it, but we'll give you as best direct as we can. So, should be a good, a good workshop. So, there you go. You're in trouble now.
Good evening, Mayor Powers, council members, city staff and constituents of the City of Galt. I would say I'm a pretty good dancer, but I'm not going to dance around anything tonight. I'm going to be very transparent. And it's good to be back here. I helped out the city with the waterway study. We did have a workshop, a couple of workshops in that, in that engagement and during that time, there was a lot of dialogue and a lot of discussion. So I expect to be the same in this situation. It's definitely a different animal compared to water, but we'll go through that, give you some background. I believe you've been briefed. You also have a full report in front of you as well as PowerPoint. And with that, I'll go over some of the primary objectives and drivers of this project. And if you have any questions while I'm doing the presentation, please feel free to speak up and I'll address those questions as we go along, as well as at the end, if you have any more. So driving factors to the sewer rates. The biggest one, which marked a little to is the new SRF loan number two, which you're going to start making payments on it next year, this next fiscal year. That was a $26 million loan. And granted, it's from the state, so you get a really low interest rate, but even just the power amount alone, $26 million, the debt payment is 1.6 million. So that starts in 18. And what that translates to is $15 for each residential customer. That's their share of the debt payment. So it's not, it's not a small fee, it's definitely a big hit, but without looking at any revenue adjustments whatsoever, the way we're viewing this is you already obtained the loan, you now need a revenue stream to be able to pay that debt, similar to what you do with SRF number one. You have a separate line item on your bill for every customer that shows SRF number, loan number one, which I think is a great way to communicate to your customers. We're showing that the same with SRF loan number two. It's a separate line item and they'll see it directly correlates to the debt only. There's no other cost in there. So it's very transparent, straightforward, but it's significant. So you look at it in relation to their current rate, it's a 30% increase just to pay the debt, without doing anything else, not even looking at anything related to rates, just what's the, what's the cost for each account. Another one, utility fund cash reserve policy. It's a new policy that has been adopted by council, which you've been briefed on, on separate council meetings. It's very robust and it's well documented on what reserves are the most appropriate to have for each utility. That has been incorporated as part of our analysis to not only meet your debt obligations and your, your net cash, things of that sort, but also to make sure that you're going to meet your reserves over a certain time period. Typically, what we would recommend when we're looking at rates, we always want to recommend we meet those reserves within five years because you're probably noticing, it's usually a five-year periods. But because that was going to be a significant hit to do the debt payment and also meet reserves in five years, we extended it out to meet it in 10 years. And we'll show you that as well. And also brief, go into a little bit more detail as to why I feel comfortable of going out 10 years instead of five years. Is there already a question?
Yeah, there is a question. I met with staff yesterday, actually, and we were going to, I'd asked a question regarding each one of the, the reserves that are identified in your study. You identify each one of the reserves, but you don't have a dollar amount or necessarily a percentage. So I was wondering whether we had that information available at this time or some, some other appropriate time. And I guess the other question is, and this is again in discussions with staff, based on the, the debt ser, or the, the reserve requirements, that ultimately has an effect on the, the rate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so then my next question was, and that was the reason for asking, what the minimum amounts were for these reserves?
Sure.
Is that maybe council would, maybe not tonight, but at another meeting, look at what, if we wish to revise these reserve policies in terms of what that number is, I think we, I think maybe we should take that opportunity. We approved the reserve policy prior to knowing how that ultimately affects, you know, this survey itself and what the ultimate rate would be. Now, maybe we don't make any changes, but I think it's at least worth looking at. And I would just ask council to, to consider agendizing that for, for another discussion. That's all. That's all for now.
Sure, no problem. We, we'll go into that a little bit later on. We do have a slide separate from what was included based on that question to show you the breakout.
Okay.
But it should also be one of the appendix, we show the cash flow of the 10 years and as part of that cash flow, it also shows the reserves and the targets for each one, for each specific one of what, in terms of million dollars.
Okay.
We do have that.
Can I interrupt again for a second?
Yes.
Did, did we get copies of this, of these slides?
Yeah.
Yes.
When did you put them in? Where are they? Are they in our?
Copy of the, of the PowerPoint?
Did you get it?
Mine's online.
Okay, just asking where it is.
I got it here.
I don't see it.
There it is.
Okay, hold on. I'll see executive Sunday.
The slides will be out.
Okay, I'll find it.
These will be after the consultant report, so there's some 60 pages of report and then it should be your slides. I don't have your packet, but...
Sorry. There you go. I got it.
And while we're on that, Councilmember Campion, since you asked that question and we're on that question, let me just give you some general numbers for you.
Sure.
So for the debt reserve combined for the both, both debts, it's 2.7 million is the target. For the capital reserve, it's 1.7. For the rate stabilization, I'm just, I'm just making rough rounding numbers, 500,000.
Okay.
And for the emergency, it's 1.5 million. And I have one more. And then for the operating, it's 1.3 million.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And in the report also gives you the basis of how it correlates, how we calculated those reserves based on the reserve policies. Another driving factor to this, so we have the SRF loan number two, we have the new reserve policies that we looked at. And then we also have just, just the updating the cost of service analysis. It's been quite a number of years since you've done the last update. So then based on that, we update your cost, allocate it based on how the system incurs that cost. And then we allocate that cost to the customers based on the demand they place on the treatment plant. Okay? And then you also have two contract customers. And one thing we did with that update, granted, it has to be incorporated with part of the contract because that's separate from Prop 218 because it's agreed upon, but we also incorporated that what their share of each loan is based on the volume they generate to the treatment plant. So they're also paying their fair share of cost of each loan. So we recommend that that portion gets incorporated to a new agreement with those contract customers.
Could you repeat that again? I'm sorry.
Sure.
The contract.
The contracted customers. We also allocated a fair share of two debts to them as well.
Okay.
Which needs to be incorporated with the next agreement with them.
Maybe for the public's benefit, our two contract customers are California Department of Corrections, which has the large regional training center located just outside the city. They receive sewer service from us. And the other contract customer pending annexation is the Liberty Ranch High School in Estralina.
So with those driving factors, what I'm now showing you is what is the effect on rates to each of the customer classes? So what you see on the, starting with the left columns, you see the customer class, you see the existing charge, and then we also kind of built up the cost. Then we show what is the charge with SRF loan number two included. And as I mentioned before, that's a $15 increase before we look at anything else. And then our proposed fixed charge for single family and multifamily, you'll see it's just a dollar 30 more. So that dollar 30 more is related to just additional revenue needed for the city's operations, you know, capital costs, reserves, things of that sort. So in the grand scope of things, the city has their, your ship in order, the $15 is a new debt that you need to fund. And then another dollar 30 just to, you know, kind of ongoing, you know, keep up with expenses, essentially, and the new reserve policies. And then with the variable components, as for non-residential, you'll see the existing range from 322 to 349. With the SRF loan number two, one thing we do with commercial is their fair share of each loan is put on their variable component because it's more fair to charge them that way in relation to the accounts that are within that customer class. Think about, say, you know, a small coffee shop versus a restaurant. Is it fair to charge both of them a flat fee or should it be a function of how much they contribute to the treatment plant? So that's how you did it before with your SRF loan number one, and we agreed to that. And we did it with SRF loan number two. Because it makes sense, it's more fair within the, within the customer class, those accounts. So with those two and plus the slight adjustment, you get up to around $5.79. So it's less than a dollar increase from where you need to be with the SRF loan number two. Okay? And one thing you notice, we also are looking at non-residential into three categories of low, medium, high. And what that is, is based on the strength concentration of the flow. Different establishments contribute different types of effluent to the treatment plant that requires a higher demand on the system. For example, if it's just a single family home or hotel, things of that sort, is very different than a restaurant. So we take that into account. It also gives the city more flexibility when new customers come online, how to classify them in relation to what's the expected amount of demand that's going to come to the treatment plant.
Excuse me, did I read in the report somewhere that there would be an analysis done on different types of users in order to come up with this classification? Or is this going to be a prescribed by use type?
It's by use type.
It's by use type, so it's not based on their actual loading or anything like that?
Well, that, that could be a special circumstance. If there's a unique type of, of use that's coming online that hasn't been in the city, then that's where the city could determine what's going to be the most appropriate classification for them of low, medium, high. But if it's a, a restaurant, things of that sort, you already have those, those are on the high side, they'll be classified accordingly.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, and the basis for this, we, we looked at, typically what's done is you look at the State Water Resource Control Board, they have the amount of concentrations of parts per million, of bio-oxygen demand and total suspended solids. But LA CSD recently took that information and updated it based on their service area. And they have a very significant service area, a lot of data points. So now the industry is using that as a source for updating the concentrations besides the State Water Resource Control Board. It's still the same use types, but now more up-to-date information. And at the end of the day, a laundry mat in LA is the same type of output as a laundry mat here. So it's a good basis to use moving forward.
Can I just walk this one?
Yes.
Go back one slide.
Yes.
So am I correct? Like if you look at the very end, the right, the residents would be paying $82, but maybe the high, non-residential, like Liberty Ranch, would only be paying 1371 total? On the, the far right?
You're on the far right? That's in year five?
Whatever year, but I...
Yeah, so the, it goes up to...
Well, the residents are paying 82, the, like a high school or someplace like that's only paying $13?
Yeah, that's, that's just the fixed charge. So the residential customers, because their flow is very constant throughout the year, it doesn't, there's not really many peaks compared to like the water. They, all they get charged is the flat rate. They don't have any additional charge for the amount of flow that comes from them. Whereas commercial, they have this fixed charge of $13, plus they have every unit of water that they use is also charged, the variable rates down below as well. So overall, they're going to be charged well above $83.
So it's going to be 10 more dollars per unit or whatever you're saying?
Yeah, 10, it'll be anywhere from eight, seven to 10 more dollars per unit that residential, it's already been accounted for, they don't get charged above 83.
Okay, thank you.
And is that, is that based on water usage? 90% of the water usage, it's not based on actual discharge?
Yeah, because discharge isn't actually metered.
Right.
So you do go off of the water usage. When we do the analysis and determine how much cost should be allocated to non-residential, we take a 10% reduction from their water use to say that around 90% goes to the treatment plant. But then when we calculate the rate, we assume all units of water, so you don't have to go to each, in your billing system to cut it off at 90. So we allocate correctly, but then for administrative purposes, we charge every unit of water. Okay? Any more questions on, on this particular slide?
Thank you.
All right, moving forward. So here's your current financial outlook. I thought this was important to also build it up this way. Just think of this as total revenue of the utility in relation to expenses. So what we have here is this orange horizontal bar is your current revenues. And then the bar, I'm sorry, the trend line is your current revenues. The bars are your expenses broken out by type of expense, with the top dark purple being the SRF loan number two. So clearly, you can see in this fiscal year, this, this is where the debt payment comes online. And if you didn't have that debt come online this year, you would be basically dead on with having enough revenue to cover your expenses. But this is the main driver, what we need that trend line to be over that dark purple Now, this next slide shows what if we only include the SRF loan number two, that $15.25. So now with that, here's the revenue that you generate. And you'll see that you're still a little bit under that bar. That's because expenses of the other categories continue to increase over time just due to inflation alone. So there's still additional revenue that's needed to cover your other expenses, so then that bar goes up. So what this slide is showing you is no revenue adjustments whatsoever, only including a surcharge for loan number two. So your revenues go up a little bit more compared to the last slide. Then, one thing we looked at was, we, we still want to look holistically, how can we mitigate rates? How can we mitigate the impact? And one thing that was determined was, the city staff did a really good job of detailing what facility... was, the city staff did a really good job of detailing what facilities were funded by the loans. And then of those facilities, there's also a fair share allocation that should be recovered or reimbursed by new development to pay their fair share of this, of these, of these treatment facilities. Based on that cataloging those facilities and what was funded, and whether it also benefits growth, it was determined that 3.6 million of the SRF loan number two could be reimbursed by capacity fees. So with that, 3.6 million is being reimbursed to the, to the ratepayers for funding this loan in advance. And that's being spread over four years, so 900,000 per year, which is why you'll see that the purple bar width reduces because it offsets that debt, which then allows you to have a little bit of a red on top, which is surplus revenue above your expenses. Essentially, that goes into reserves to fund your capital expense. But then you'll see, once that is no longer available, then those expenses increase. So now what, what we're able to do is, we're able to increase revenues slowly as a measured approach, to then be able to be at a correct amount in year five, to be able to support that full debt payment when you don't have those offsets anymore from capacity fees.
On that, on the 3.6 million, and that's just based on just the second SRF loan?
That's correct.
That was a proportionate amount that could be allocated. And I've had discussions with staff on this, and I wanted to get your reaction. You know, the, we have an existing plant there, and we have the infrastructure, we have the pump, the lift stations, the
Sure.
pumps, the, the entire system. So isn't it reasonable to assume that, that, since the, the ratepayers to this point have, have been responsible for this entire system, that there also be an offset on future development to reimburse the ratepayer for the existing system that exists today?
That's a very good question. And that also is a driving factor to how we're structuring your capacity fees. That's going to be another separate agenda item that we're going to bring forward probably within the next 30 days. And what we're doing there is, we're doing a buy-in approach to the capacity fees. So then new development is buying into the system because of these improvements that have been made. So they'll be paying for their fair share of costs based on the assets you have in the ground today. And then that could be used to continue to provide the same level of service to them.
Would it, would it be possible to use whatever that revenue that is generated to offset the rates as well? Or what is, what is the intended purpose of that revenue, then?
The intended purpose of that is to then fund capital improvements. So you could use that, which essentially could mitigate future rate increases. But we don't know how that revenue is going to come in over time. It could be a slowdown, or maybe revenue is going to be picking up again. And then you would determine, maybe on an annual basis or before the next rate study, how much revenue have we collected over the, over the last three years in capacity fees? And then based on that, how much do we want to use to offset our capital improvement plan that we have in place that is, that we know, to then be able to mitigate the next rate increase?
But, but you could also look at it from the perspective, if, if, if it's put back into the existing ratepayer, the ratepayers who funded the system, you would have to, as an alternative to look at capital improvements, you would then have to increase, increase your rate, which then all residents would be paying the same, new and old, for those, for the capital improvements. I'm just trying to think of a, of a way to offset, you know, this is, you know, it's a big jump. And if there is another way that doesn't diminish the city's ability to meet its capital improvement needs, but at the same time recognizes who paid for the system.
Sure. Yeah, that's totally, that's completely possible. In our analysis, we're assuming no growth for financial planning purposes.
Right.
So if growth does come online, then you're, you're going to get an increase in revenue regardless of capacity fees, just in rates alone.
Right.
That could help out mitigating rates. And then you're also going to have capacity, one-time capacity revenue that you may determine, a portion of that is, from a policy standpoint, is also going to be used to reduce rates.
Okay.
Let me go to the next slide, and I'll show you that besides these, SRF loan number two, we are now also recommending revenue adjustments. And those revenue adjustments above and beyond SRF loan number two surcharge are 8%, followed by 6%. You'll notice here that now you have red on top of your, of your expense bar. That red is funding your capital improvements and you're meeting your reserves. So giving Councilmember Campion's example, if you do have an increase in development, you are going to get more rate revenue that these red bars are going to increase. And then you're also going to have one-time capacity revenue that you might decide to use to mitigate rates. If that happens, then what could potentially occur is that you may be able to change these revenue adjustments that we're recommending today, which is the ceiling, down to 1% or 2%, or maybe one year you could go to 0%.
Right.
So I wouldn't speculate now of, let's make an assumption of how much development's going to come online and the, and correlate the amount of revenue that will come in. I would just look at it on annual basis or every two years, wherever you desire, to see how much revenue has come in, and can we reduce it by 1%? Will we reduce it by 2%? What's the impact? And a lot of cases, you may be able to do so. As an example, I'm working with the City of Atwater, and they're doing a refunding of their debt. And they're going to have a $400,000 savings annually. And with that, we're actually not only going to eliminate a future proposed rate adjustment, we're actually going the other way. And actually going to reduce rates, which is fairly rare in these times.
How come you couldn't work that magic here?
Well, tell you what, let's go to 10%. And then in two years, I could go lower. But no, so that is possible that you could look at. So with that, with those recommended revenue adjustments, then what we didn't show you is, you also have capital. You have very detailed planning capital expenses for the next five years. And that ranges 1.5 million in fiscal year ending 2019. It goes up to 2 million. And then we also looked at was your typical capital expense on an annual basis, to make sure that you're continuing to reinvest in the system ongoing. So you're never, we're working on emergencies, things of that sort, or being reactive to your, to your investment. So that, that's why you have more revenues above your operating expense, because you still have to fund this $1.5 million a year capital expense above, beyond that. And then with that, what that does is then, this is your ending fund balances of your reserves. Granted, this is the total reserves, and we do have another slide that I could pull up separately that shows these reserves broken out by each reserve category of how much it makes up this total amount. But the total amount of reserve targets that I mentioned to Councilmember Campion and the rest of the council earlier, I gave rough numbers for each one. That's what makes up this red trend line. This is your reserve target of where the minimum is. And then you'll notice that with the revenue adjustments, with the SRF loan number two, you'll see you're over in the first couple of years. You dip down, but that's okay. That's just because you lost that revenue offset of the capacity revenue. But you'll see that you, you go to a low, and then you rebuild back up. I'm not too concerned that you dip down below your target, mainly because sewer rates are very, very stable. It's not like water that could fluctuate dramatically based on usage. With sewer, because you basically charge residential a flat rate every single month throughout the whole year, it ends up being around 85% of your revenue is very, very stable. So it does, you don't have that volatility compared to water. So that's why, even though we typically recommend meeting your reserves in five years, I'm okay with it extending out for 10 years. And in this case, it kind of needs, it's kind of necessary so we could get 6% instead of, if not, we would have to do 10% each year. And we want to try to mitigate rates as much as possible because rates are going up just because of $15, just to start with the SRF loan. Okay? Okay, now we show you the financial plan. Now I want to go into rate design. The first thing we do is, we know the revenue that you need. This just shows you your revenues by category. We have revenue offsets that we get to use. Then we determine what's the, what's your cash balance that needs to be at the end of the year, which is your, basically your, your net income. Any adjustments for the fact that when you implement rates, you're going to lose a couple of months. So we analyze that. And then we come up with a total revenue that's required from rate, which is 6.6 million. And then that's what's we're going to allocate to the different customer classes. So the way we do that is, we have customer service, and then we have the SRF loans. And those two are fixed costs. And then we have these variable costs that are more related to the treatment plants. We have flow. And then we have BOD, which I mentioned earlier, that's bioauctioned demand. And then we have total suspended solids, which stands for TS, is abbreviated by TSS. What we do is, we look at how, how much is your customer service? And then we already know what your SRF loan payments are. This is the annual debt payment. And then with the variable component, we looked at, how does your system operate? And then we allocate that cost based to your treatment plant. And then we're going to, so now that we have a total cost by cost components, we then are going to spread those costs based on the appropriate unit of service to recover that cost by. So as an example, with, first one is customer service. This is somewhat different than water. With water, it was per, certain costs were spread based on having an account. There's a base fee per account. And then there was a fee based on the size of the meter. With sewers, meter size doesn't matter, because it goes down the drains. It's not a function of the size of the meter. It's, so every single customer is charged evenly for customer service. Every customer is getting charged $9.47 in the first year, as, think of it as the base fee for having an account with the city. Okay? And that's for customer service, billing, things of that sort. Then we have SRF loan number one. And because we are, need to allocate that cost appropriately to non-residential, our first step is to allocate the cost to each customer class based on total flow. So then everyone's getting their fair share costs based on how much they contribute to the treatment plant. And then once we do that, we then convert the amount to residential to a cost per, a flat charge per month. But then we're able to not do a per month for non-residential, and then we could put it, create it, allocate it based on their variable components, their commodity charge I showed you earlier. And then we do the same approach to SRF loan number two. And you'll see that the percent allocation is the same percentage for each category. So what that means is, residential contributes 83% of the total flow to the treatment plant. So then they pay 83% of the debt payment. Okay? And then the flow components. So with flow, this, what flow means is just total volume. Again, just how much they contribute to a treatment plant. And then residential, they pay their fair share, non-residential. So the, the type of, of flow, the concentration of flow doesn't matter here. It's just percentage of flow, and that's it. So you'll see, with percentage of flow, I would go with single family, around 82%. And then we look at bioauctioned demand and total suspended solids. With bioauctioned demand, this is where non-residential now has higher concentrations compared to single family. So intuitively, what you expect is, the percent allocated to single family would be less than, than when what they were, what they were allocated based on total flow. Because now we're weighting that flow based on concentration, and non-residential has a higher concentration. So you'll notice that the 82% now went down to 73%. Commercial gets a bigger cost allocation for these strength components, which makes sense, because restaurant, for example, generates a higher strength than a single family home. Okay? And then with total suspended solids, similar approach, single family gets a lower allocation when we factor into strength. With that, we then have the total amount that, of variable costs that's allocated to residential. And then because residential, as I mentioned earlier, they're, think about indoor use. Your indoor use doesn't really change much throughout the year. It's pretty constant. Granted, you might take a couple more showers during the summer, but overall, your indoor use pretty much fairly stays the same. So then because of that, we are able to be comfortable to convert it, this variable component, into just a flat rate per month. And the way we do that is, we look at, what's the typical amount of gallons per day per capita that comes from a, each resident, which is what we did on the water side. So we're using 65 gallons per capita per day, based on your density. For a single family, it's 3.3. And then it determines the amount of expected flow that is going to be generated each month. So then we take that flow times your, times the unit rate of 344, to come up with a typical amount that's going to occur every month of 2960. And then we say, no, that's going to be the rate every month. So then we have to take that rate, plus the fixed components, which was customer service and the two loans, and we get the totally burdened, fully burdened monthly flat rate that single family gets charged. And then what that also allowed us to do is, come up with a discount for senior, senior housing by looking at what's the typical amount of residents that are going to live in senior housing. Typically, it's just going to be two individuals and no children for those, for those circumstances. So then therefore, the variable component is based on two instead of 3.3. So then they get a lower variable component that makes up their overall flat monthly rate. So they get a discount of essentially $12. Go ahead?
I met with staff yesterday also.
Yes.
One of the, one of my questions was, do we have the definition of what senior living is? Do we have that now?
Well, right now, I think there was, for the analysis, there was two developments that had senior living designation, and we identified the, the number of units within
You're talking about restricted senior housing?
Yes.
Not any senior, and not, not any household with seniors in it. You took into account just our restricted senior housing?
Yes, that's correct. That is something you could consider, but our, the analysis did not account for any type of data that would be able to be compiled to determine how many seniors are in other, other housing that's not designated.
If I might insert, that's an excellent question. They had to make some assumptions for purposes of modeling, and so they looked at the known number of restricted senior housing units in the city.
That's about 240? Is that what I understand?
Yeah, that sounds about right. Correct.
At council's discretion, staff would be supportive of the concept of, if we can create some, some verification process, maybe an annual certification process. You know, there are a lot of single and double residential units that are outside restricted, but are still just two people. We would certainly be, as part of the conversation, if you want to give us some direction to, we'd like to see that more than just restricted units, but anybody that could, can meet the test and the definition, and then maybe an annual certification process where they come in and show us that they still, you know, they don't have eight kids now living with them versus just two seniors. And we'd be happy to put together a definition that could apply citywide if that's council's plan.
Senior housing with less than two individuals.
Okay.
Well, it could be one, two.
Well, yeah, well.
There's a lot of one. Well, you said two, it could be one.
Yeah, two or less.
Yeah. I didn't hear the or less.
Thank you.
So do we want to give them a direction?
Yesterday, staff wasn't sure what your methodology was. Thanks.
I, I think it's worthwhile to take a look at.
I do, too.
Yeah.
I don't know how, how that affects the study, but.
Well, I'm not sure how many more units are going to, are going to be captured, and when. Because that's going to probably roll out over the span of a year, or people notifying you and making a appeal, if you will, that you get charged and show the proof. That, you know, you could view it as, well, if you wish, you could either, if we don't count for now in some way of assuming a certain number of units in addition to this, then it will hit reserves. You'll find a, offer reserves. Or we do make an assumption, then these rates will, will go up a little bit, based on that assumption that more of the SFR, MFR are going to go into the senior living category.
Well, you could, yeah. And you're right, because you're, it's going to take at least a year.
Oh.
I believe before it's fully implemented or close to it. So it, and if I understand this correctly, assuming we approve what's before us tonight, this is a, a five-year program where we could come back annually to make adjustments on rates, either up or down, based on data from the prior year, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to raise rates when you say up or down without 218%.
Up or down, what I'm saying, you couldn't exceed the 6% or the 8%. I understand that. Yes.
Right. Yes, yeah, you couldn't exceed those numbers.
If you implemented at a lower, it's say 3%, and you had to go to four, you could go up to six.
Because you took into account this is having no growth, correct? I mean, that there was, you took this at zero growth?
Correct.
That was the assumption you made?
Or.
So we can.
I'm sorry, one percent.
Oh, one percent, okay. And we can probably assume that for the next couple of years, we're going to exceed that one percent. So if we did that, then we might not need to do the whole six percent. We could do, if we looked at the prior year, maybe only four percent increase is needed, correct?
That is a potential.
We can't exceed the six percent with two eighteen, but we could choose to do less. I mean, the council of the future could choose.
That is possible, or you find that with that growth that exceeds one percent, and the potential appeals that come forward that you're not aware of, it might end up being a wash.
Okay.
Yeah, and if the numbers doubled from two fifty to five hundred, it's not going to have a, a large impact on the rates side, a hundred and forty-four dollars a year per, you know, that's, for every hundred, that's, you know, going to only be fourteen thousand. It's, it's, it's not a huge driver, even if we were off by a factor of two or three, if there was a land rush to get senior rates, it's, it's sort of in the low percentages of what the total revenue that's being generated is being talked about here.
Okay. So now, showing the proposed rates for essentially commercial Irish, and then residential, building up the components that we already went through. So with residential, you see the customer service. You also notice that everyone's getting charged the same rate. Then we have single family and multifamily seniors with the SRF loan number one, loan number two. And then, the flow charge, that was on the previous slide, that we converted back to a flat charge. And then, that's how we came up with the monthly rates for residential. And then, you'll see, for non-residential, the SRF number one and number two gets converted the other way into a variable component per, per unit of water that's used. And then, we have the flow rate, and then that's the total commodity rate for, for the sewer. Okay? Any questions on that slide? Keep in mind, they are still getting, every single customer class is getting their fair share allocation. This is a full, comprehensive cost of service update. And then, one thing I wanted to point out, I mentioned it briefly earlier. Now that we converted that flow component residential to a flat charge, now, you're, the amount of revenue that's being recovered on a, as a fixed revenue every month is eighty-seven percent. So eighty-seven percent of your total revenue from sewer is very, very, very stable revenue that's coming in, besides non-payments. So it's definitely, it's substantially different than water. Or really, it's more like sixty to seventy percent of your revenues coming from the commodity charges. Okay? Now, what are the impacts? The residential bills, we showed the existing, and then we showed the base rate and the two loans. So here's your existing on the, on the far left, where it only had SRF loan number one. And then, we're showing a, a transition. Now, we layer on SRF loan number two. That's with no revenue adjustments. You go from forty-eight thirty-seven to sixty-three sixty-two. I would say, you're sixty-three sixty-two, if you decide to do nothing, I would say, this is your new, your new rate, because you already, you already took out the loan. Now, you need a revenue stream to cover that debt payment. So I would say, this is your new baseline, even though your existing rate technically is forty-eight thirty-seven. Okay? And then, once we layer that with the revenue adjustments, with the first year being eight percent, you'll see that the base charge goes up a little bit. So then, you're going to have a total amount from sixty-three sixty-two to sixty-four ninety-two.
What was the reason for the reduction in the SRF one loan from?
Sure, that's a, just from updating the cost of service, and looking at the flow coming from each of the customers, and also accounting for the fact that contract customers should also get an allocation, then it made a slight reduction to single family. So there was a little bonus there. Not much, but something.
Sure.
And then, this is showing residential over the five-year planning horizon. You'll see that, again, we have the existing with SRF loan number two. Then we have the proposed rate that includes the eight percent revenue adjustment. And then, it's essentially six percent increases from there on. And that's how we get to that eighty-two thirty-six in year five. Again, keep, we already emphasized it, but these, these are your ceiling numbers. Okay? You can't go over this amount, you can always adopt a lower amount. Looking at non-residential, non-residential is very difficult to, to model, because non-residential is all over the spectrum in terms of usage. So for this case, we just use a hundred CCF. And then, we're showing what's the impact of a low, medium, high customer? How they're, how, where do they fall? And what we're showing in three bars, we're showing existing, the existing with SRF loan number two, which, again, I view that as the new base, and then the proposed. So you really see an impact on the high, because they have the highest concentration. And then, it's also important to look at where you fall within the, the region. And again, we're showing your existing versus with the SRF loan and with the proposed. If we just focus on proposed, you'll see that, you know, you're, you're on the high side, but you're not much off compared to everybody else. You're running around five to six dollars. One is since three dollars.
I believe while you were on that slide, might be at appropriate time, we've spoken with several council members, you know, kind of, how does this impact our customers? Again, this is a residential comparison. The real comparable on this list, if to us, is City of Woodland, second from the right. And you'll notice that it's within a couple of dollars of the rate we're proposing. They have just completed, as a city, very similar upgrades, and recently, within the last eighteen months, Kimberly, I think, redone their rates, done the same process. And interestingly, even though they're a much larger city, came up with the same ballpark of figures. They are discharging to the same delta with the same requirements that we are. All of the others, except City of Loda, do have surface discharges like we do, tributary to the delta. They're going to have to meet all the same requirements. All the rest of those comparables fall within the Sacramento Regional Sanitation Plant, up west of Elk Grove. And they're about to embark on, what I've heard is, an estimated two billion dollar upgrade. We, ours was twenty-five million-ish, theirs is anticipated to be two billion, and they haven't got started yet, so those costs could, could trend north from there. So they have yet to build that into their rates, and I think by the time they complete that, even though they got hundreds of thousands of customers across the region to spread that to, that's an awful large number, as much as twenty-six million was a big number for gold. And so I think that you'll find that, in a couple of years, that we're going to be back again the bottom of the regional spectrum. Hard pill to swallow today, but it will look a little less aggressive when all the others get hit with a large rate increase over the four or five years ahead.
So with that, that concludes my presentation. But I'm more than happy to answer any further questions that you have in any part of this, or if there's any additional information you'd like to know before deliberating, and any, any comments and feedback for this workshop.
Just a couple of things before we get into the questions and the public and stuff. There was talk about using developer money or capacity fees to pay down things in the future and right now. What we're proposing right now is, all of our capacity fee fund that we have will be zeroed out. We will apply that for the four years, and there is no more money. I mean, that, that comes down to zero in that fund. So we're utilizing everything that we can that's available right now to bring down the fund. Another item is, the SRF fund, we keep emphasizing it over and over, we got to pay back this loan, we got to pay back this loan. The city signed an agreement back in two thousand and fourteen with the state, SRF people, that stated in there, in several places of the agreement, we have to set rates to pay this back. We have to make reasonable changes in our rates to be able to pay that back. And so that was a promise that we did on that contract. The final one, it's great that Outwater gave back, or is going to give back four hundred thousand dollars. We did a rate reduction back in early two thousand and twelve. That equals over one point five million that we have given back to the customers in the past five and a half years. We have done that. We did, we did that reduction back in, I believe it was February two thousand and twelve. So we saw at that time that we were, we had collected some money that we could give back to the customers, and, and it's still going back. It's, it's, it's still going back to the customers monthly. So even though we've done all of these improvements, we, we did give back over a million and a half dollars, essentially. So good for Outwater, but I think we did a little better.
So this is a study session, and we welcome concerns, comments, questions from council, and at their pleasure from the public. This is a work in progress. There are, anytime you, you look at rate studies and rate models, there, you could, well, could we pay less now and more later? And what's the, you know, it's usually pay me less now and more later, much more later, because you got to catch back up. The more that you push payments to the future, the more risk there is. As an example, the city built its new police facility that's now about ten years old, using developer bonds. And then, the bottom fell out of the market for six years, and we didn't issue a single new family residence. And that's still an albatross around the city's necks, where we've had to borrow money from other funds that'll have to be paid back with interest. So putting sort of all your eggs in the future development basket is great while there's a nice brisk economy and lots of homes are being built. But you probably see more risk into what happens when that stops. And, and then, you still have to meet the debt service covenant. So just, just kind of some perspective on, it, it really gets down to how much risk you want to take on having to come back and increase them even further in the future versus have, trying to have some rate stability going forward. And we're looking for some balance, current increases versus future increases. And again, as was noted, these, once you go into the Prop two eighteen process, you set a rate cap. We come to you annually with our budget, and annually with any cost of living recommendations. And we would be happy to, you know, look at that with you annually if, you know, revenues are exceeding our projections.
I would like to bring up a couple of the hidden slides, the additional slides.
We do actually have a few extra slides that we prepared, based on some of the comments and questions we've been hearing over the last few days after the packet was prepared. So I'm going to actually pass these around. These would be additions to what you have in your packet, and I'll help Mark find those slides here. Let's go one more.
I want to go right here first. You can open that up.
Let me find my icon, I don't have my glasses on here. See if I can jump to that slide. That it?
This is just a simple classification of what the non-residential are. Just some examples of what the low, medium, and high. There is a more comprehensive, but this is just what we've shown right now, you know, overall, what we see in, in the different systems that we would be allocating for non-residential.
And we may or may not cover all those slides. It was kind of here, if there were questions, we'd have some material to put up for the public or for the council.
I just have one question, and forgive me if this was given out in the magnitude of information, but how much longer do we have on the first loan? And then, how long is this loan, what's the anticipated payoff year?
We have on the first loan, we have about twelve years left on that. We owe about twelve, twelve and a half million dollars on that. And this first loan is twenty, I mean, the second loan is twenty years. And our first payment will actually be this September, for the first payment.
Thank you.
Could you also give a breakdown on what the actual construction costs were versus what the, because I know that, you know, it was, the debt's twenty-six million, but the facility was around twenty or something, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, right here, we've, we've got that broken down. The soft costs, which are engineering, the planning, we have a, when we did the planning document back in two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen, we have an environmental document that's connected with it for grow, for, for build out of this city. So that environmental document is going to allow us to do additions to this facility for over twenty years. It will, it will have the, the environmental support behind it. Plus, we have the, the master plan that shows what's going to happen at the various stages. So that's part of the soft costs, design was in there and such. Construction, the construction contract was a little over eighteen million dollars. We had a little over a half a million dollars in additional contract change orders for the construction. We have some equipment that we still need to purchase, and we will be bringing that back to you at one of the next council meetings. And for a total project of twenty-five and a half million, just a little bit over that, our, our SRF allocation that we signed the loan was, was just under twenty-six and a half million dollars. So that's the breakdown. And then, just, just a visual part of that is how it impacted the entire plant out there. All the yellow shows where we impacted the plant in that construction. And about ten percent of the money that we've used in the loan was to improve deferred maintenance on equipment that we had out there. So we basically have a, a plant that is ready to go for another twenty to twenty-five years, as long as we continue doing our preventative maintenance and such. So it's, and, and we've touched every major component of that, of that plant during this construction. Any other questions on this? Then I have one more. This was, this was based on discussing with, with different council members on how the reserves match up. We gave you the blue bar back in the, you know, it just shows blue all the way across, but we didn't show you the breakdown. This gives the breakdown of what each of those components are that makes up the reserve. Just so that we know, or you can see, as we make any adjustment to the reserve, we have to make an adjustment somewhere in there. And when you look at the first three at the bottom, those are things that you really don't want to touch. Well, for, the first two, the both SRF loans, they require us to take money, stick it in a special account, and never touch it, except for emergencies.
What's that total amount, again, for the?
It's, it's a little over two and a half million.
Two and a half million for the?
And so you can see on the bar there, it's the, I believe it's the two middle ones, the purple ones, right in there. The light purple.
That represents the.
Yes, SRF.
Mandatory reserve.
Yep. The bottom, let's see, yep. And. The bottom one is operating reserve. That's just to pay our loans, I mean, to pay our bills. We, we only collect money every two months. So we have to, we have to, that's for a four-month reserve, because we've got to pay our bills. Money comes in at different times, bills come in at different times. And this allows us to, where we don't have to go in the bank and keep grabbing money out, you know, then. So, so basically, those first, or those bottom three are ones you really don't want to touch, because that, that's, we're mandated by it, and we also need to pay our bills. The next one is the CIP, and you see that one really adjusts. It, that one gets the biggest hit. We have a two million dollar project, we still have two million dollars left to go on a project for the arsenic. We have some other projects that are coming up, two million, almost two million related to regulation requirements, you know, going for a new permit, doing some improvements that they're going to require on the new permit. And, and so it's, that's where the impact of all of those are. So if we're going to impact our reserves, we've got to look at where we're going to impact it in, especially those, those three upper ones. How are we going to impact it? Because the three bottom ones, we really can't touch that. We, we have to leave that to do our business. So, so I, I just wanted to bring that out to you, to show you that we had that. We have a couple of other slides, some of it has to do with non-residential and stuff. And if you have questions on those, we can talk about those, so.
So Mark, when the end comes. So when the end of the loan comes, so then, in the final year or something, do you use the reserve then to pay it, to pay like the final payment? I mean, we don't keep this reserve forever, right? I mean, eventually, the reserve for the SR, for the loans will go back to the loan, correct?
I would see that the last year of your SRF, both loans, the last year, we would take that money and just pay it off, just pay it a year early, just get it done.
Use the reserve, okay.
So you're looking at eleven years from now, we'd pay off SRF one. Nineteen years from now, we'd pay off. 19 years from now, we'd pay off SRF 2. Unless we had big growth and the fair share component comes in, and we can pay them down sooner. Just depends, yeah. Mr. Cruz.
I even, don't even want to bring it up, just putting it out there. But we're assuming that there aren't going to be any additional regulations coming from the state. We both know that's not going to be the case. What contingencies do we have as far as that?
We don't.
Yeah.
You know, you can't predict what they're going to do. We do know that they're going to do two things. One thing to us and one thing to everybody else.
Well put. Well put.
Yeah. So the one thing to us is we have to do something with our zinc. So we're looking at some chemical additions and stuff, and we could probably do that. And we have, we have an estimate in our CIP budget, about 700,000 or so. And I think we can probably meet the zinc requirements that they're going to make us hit in four years from now, okay? In the new permit, well, we'll have another five years. So really, it's nine years from now to try to deal with zinc. The other one is, they're trying to save some snails out there. And it really are, snails, mollusks, whatever you want to call them. And that might hit us in this next permit, I don't think so. So I think it's still 10 years out. So what are we going to do in 10 years, you know? We'll see it on our permit, just like we got it on our last permit in 2010, and they gave us five years to figure out about it. And then after the, after three years, we're adding a couple more, and they gave us actually till 216 and 218 to do certain things. So they gave us up to eight years to do things. And by law, in regulations, they're required to give us up to 10 years. So we did a little quicker. The regional board, or the regional plant, SAC Regional, is doing it a little slower. But their rates are going to go, they're going to, they're going to race by ours. No doubt within about three years, so. I mean, that doesn't make it any better for the hit that our customers are going to take. It's a big hit. But it was out of our decision back in 2010. That's what happened.
So if we chose under Prop 218, I mean, we have a very, we have really healthy reserves. I mean, we have pre-robust reserves. I guess the 8% hit in the beginning kind of concerns me if we didn't raise it quite so quickly. Because I think we are going to have a couple of years of growth that we could buffer it and not be able to have quite hit that 8%, maybe a 6% or. It just seems to me that the 8% hit in the first year is a pretty big hit. I'd also like to see the senior living, you know, definition brought back and that we look at some sort of program to make that citywide, not just restricted housing. I don't know, those are kind of my thoughts. I mean, I hope that, I mean, I think for purposes of 218, I know you have to project out at the 6%. You know, hopefully, we won't have to hit the 6% every year. So staff's proposals, they would bring it back to us yearly or in the budget cycle? We'd look at it yearly?
It's determined what council gives us direction to do. And that's why it's a workshop. We're here to hear from you and to bring back at the next workshop some of what you suggested and to put it down and analyze it and to bring you back some information on that.
I agree. I'd like to see, I'd like to see what it would do if we took it out of reserves to offset that 2% to bring it down to 6%. I think that's a great idea, just to take a look and see, well, what does it do to this chart here? And what's it do to total reserves? I also agree on the senior issue. I would also like to see, I know you're working on it now as part of the connection fee, but I would like to see whatever that, if you want to call it buy-in, I don't know what you, what are you terming that for the existing facilities that are benefiting new development? I don't know what term you're using.
Yes, buy-in, that's correct.
That's, okay. I would like to see some, whatever that amount is segregated out, and then what you would reasonably think an appropriate share would be to go back directly in the rates to reduce it at the same time. Because we have, we have a, we have a component in here that covers the cost of capital. So, and I don't know exactly how all the capital is budgeted or funded, but we would be taking, it would obviously would reduce that amount available for capital out of the connection fee. But we have a component in the rate structure for capital as well. So I think we've got two different sources. I'd like to see, you know, what that amount would be if we took all of it or some reasonable percentage on how that would affect the rates here. Given all other assumptions, the 6% and so forth. I think it'd be worth looking at. I don't know what the rest of council thinks.
I agree.
I agree.
We could look into that. I also want to mention something about the 8%. Because of the Prop 218 process and having to do the noticing 45 days out and then hold a public hearing, and then you probably won't implement rates until that next, start of the next month, we're looking at, from where we are today, if we start moving forward with a city public hearing right now, you won't have rates implemented until at best August 1st. So the 8% would have been 6% if we were able to start July 1st, as an example. So because we lost three months and the noticing period and everything, that's why it ticked up for the first year 8% instead of 6%. But keep in mind also that, because typically, you, your rates are increased in March every year, except for this first one because of the loan payment, that next 6% in year number two, that would not incur until March of 2019, which is essentially 18 months plus, okay? So keep that in mind as well. There's going to be, the 8% then, then I can see an increase for over 18, around 18 months from October.
Anything else, council? Thank you very much. Do we have, I guess you got what everyone wants to bring back? Has that been written down?
So far, yes, but if there's going to be discussion within, between council.
I think we're good.
Take notes.
Thank you very much.
We've got public comment.
Public comment?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
I was just saying we were done, council.
Oh, okay.
Geez, everybody's always ready to jump on you, it turns me crazy. Okay, Dan. Dan Jimenez?
Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city. Just a couple of questions for clarification, really. Are we saying that, under the current rate structure, that the people are paying for their utilities, it isn't enough funds right now? Is the city losing money? Under the current rate structure?
Once we start paying an additional million and a half a year for the new loan, yes, that would be, we would be losing money. And if with no rate increase, our nine and a half million reserve, we'd be bankrupt in four years without a rate increase.
Okay, but right now, we're not in that situation where you're not collecting enough revenue to pay the bills, is that correct?
I think one of the slides you saw showed that, you know, without this new SRF loan, that the city's in pretty good shape on its current rate.
Okay. Then my next question is, on one of your pie charts, or you, yeah, your pie chart up there, you showed general admin and collection. What's the difference there on admin and collection? What's collection, I guess is what I'm asking?
Generally, administration would be office support, billing system, customer service, whereas collection would be, treatment is out at the plant.
Oh, okay.
Collection is all of our pipeline maintenance, our flushing, our leak repairs, our lift station maintenance, that's all collection system to get it to the plant.
Okay, so in your proposed 8% increase, taking general admin, what percentage of general admin impacts that 8%? Is it 1%, 2%?
Well, I'll defer to Habib for a more technical answer, but let me take a shot at the layperson's version is, they've looked at all of our costs, all components of our cost, and then attributed them to each of our customer classes. And the net result is, we're going to need an additional 8% on top of the SRF 2 loan. And so it's part of how much revenue you need to pay the bills and how much you would fall short. So it's not directly attributable to those, but those are, those costs are all part of our revenue need. We have to cover our costs.
Okay, maybe I stated it wrong. What I wanted to know is, general admin, which is, you know, everybody that has something to do with running the wastewater treatment plant. You have that in your graph. What percentage of that impacts that 8%? So in other words, if you have 8%, is 2% general admin or?
Let's have Habib take a crack at that since they've actually run those numbers.
So I first want to add the caveat that, when we're looking at revenue adjustment, is revenue adjustment needed overall? We don't, we're not looking at every single component and how much of an increase do we need for this component, the next component? How much revenue do we need above your current revenue to cover your revenue requirements? But if we want to look at it in terms of that, I would say, it's more of what percent is your general admin in relation to your total expenses? If I just look at operating alone and not the capital, then it's 13% of your total expenses. Okay?
So it's not minimal, that's for sure. Okay, then the other question I have is for, let me find this part here. I had to, for, for new growth, I think you had 3.6 million dollars for new growth. How did that number come about that developers only paid that amount? And then it falls off the table after four years?
So the general answer to that question, and there's a lot of technical study that's been done to come up with that number, is we looked at the systems at the treatment plant that were being upgraded with the 26 million dollar loan. And then attributed, as we do with the study at large, is how much current demand is there for that subsystem within the plant, for the clarifiers, for the oxidation ditches, for the filters, for the UV? And said, how much remaining capacity is there? And that would be the percentage that's attributable to new development that has yet to occur. Is, we've got to meet the current needs, but there's still capacity left in the upgraded components. And so that's how we generally calculated the amount attributable to what will be pending new development.
So did you use a percentage, say, of 3% new growth to get at that number? I guess I'm, I'm talking numbers and you're talking.
Yeah, so, well, I'm trying to give, give sort of understandable answers without getting to two decimal places into techno babble here. So if there is X% of remaining capacity in the new oxidation ditch that we built with new SRF loan, okay? That gets attributable, and the cost of construction at that percentage gets attributed to development fees. And we did that for each major system that was upgraded and determined, is there any remaining capacity on today's flows? And if so, what was the percentage? And we'd apply the cost of the improvement times that percentage would be attributable to new development. And so then we added those, all those subsystem costs of percentage attributable to remaining capacity, and that adds up to the 3.6 million dollars that we're saying, okay. So we will take that out in four annual, equal annual installments out of the developer impact fee because we need the developers to keep building houses to pay that. And that helps offset the first four years of system-wide costs attributable to the improvements.
I think too, it might be helpful, Steve, to explain what, the methodology that you are, that you must utilize in order to determine that. Because the way I understood it, that there's a methodology approved by the state in order to come up with whatever this percentage is.
Yes, and I think what you're probably alluding to is, we have to use, in determining remaining capacity or rated capacity of the plant, we have to use some fairly conservative factors because nobody is exactly sure what the future and exactly what businesses, exactly how many homes will come in what order. And so they make us use rather conservative future projections and as to what is actually available. Because if suddenly a new cannery came in and that wasn't part of our projection, you know, that has a tremendous load on our plant. And so we need to have some capacity available for those sort of unexpected new businesses that, let's say, somebody moved in that was, wanted to produce a product that had a large biological oxygen demand on the plant. Well, we can't anticipate specific businesses, so we're using estimated, based on current businesses, what we expect the demand to be. So we have to use very conservative numbers. Now, once development occurs, as those building permits are pulled, they get put into a capacity buy-in fee that matches their estimated actual demand. And a high-strength user would pay more, and a low-strength user would pay less. And then we can sort of right-size that as, as we reach the 80% build-out, the 90% build-out of current capacity. We can actually refine those projections, go back to the state, petition for, you know, more realistic rather than conservative numbers. And we might be able then get another 500 homes approved for the existing plant before we have to build a new expansion.
Because we deal in realistic life and what our builds are, so.
And Steve, if we had more growth, if we had more buy-in, then we would be able to look at, in the future, the council would be able to look at it not being that 6% increase, but maybe only being a 3% increase.
Yeah, so for.
Those buy-ins will help offset.
Total revenue, and each new customer is now a paying customer for operating costs. So for purposes of sort of middle-of-the-road projections, the study has assumed a 1% growth rate. For GALT, that's about 70 homes a year. Right now, we're at a pace of a little over 100. In the past year, we're thinking it'll stay the same. So all of a sudden, you've got a few more homes than a model used to estimate. And so there will be some extra revenue in the operating and the capital side that we could then, in a year, if that development continues, say, all right, listen, we don't need the 6% or the 8% or whatever, whichever year we're looking at. And we recommend it only be 4% or 2%. Or if growth really took off, maybe it's 0%. So we're sort of setting rate caps that we would then, as part of our annual budget process, could look at with council. And we've already committed to you that when we bring back the, sort of the CPI annual adjustments, that we'll give you an updated report on, is it necessary? Just because the rate said we could, doesn't necessarily mean we should. And that's an annual conversation through memo and budget action that we have with the council. And we would certainly be willing to do that going forward on any approved rate structure.
The other last concern I have is loading this up within, we have the rate adjustment will take place in October 1st, 2017. The second adjustment will take place six months later, approximately. Well, it'd be March 1st of 2000, oh, no, I'm sorry, I was reading that as 18. So a year and a half. Shouldn't it, shouldn't that be even stretched out a little bit more? Just a thought, I mean, I mean, that's quite a bit.
It could be, but that means that we're now hitting reserves harder, which means we're going to have to charge more later to build the reserves up, or growth may take place. So it's how much risk are we willing to take? How much, what do we want to assume on a growth rate? And, you know, again, our recommendation is that you establish a reasonable cap and then. then hold us accountable annually to say, do we really need that?
Because it's hard to predict the future. I mean, you have to, like you're saying, you want to cover all your bases, and if it comes back to, I'm trying to put it in layman's terms, my own self, and if it comes back to where, you know, you have reserves or you have a way that you can offset it, then that's what you're going to do. But you can't say, we're going to make it six percent the next year and the next year and the next year and the next year. You can give an estimate, but you, and you want to give a good estimate, you know, and you hope that you kind of hit it on the mark or you were a little below, but you got to get your crystal ball out for a lot of this stuff, and that's not an easy thing to do. So I kind of commend you on you guys for doing that. You know, it's not easy.
Well, it's not easy on our pocketbook.
I understand that.
Thank you.
I think that the thing that everybody has to realize too, that, you know, it's not us trying to put more money in your, on your bill, it's the state of California that keeps mandating so much that, you know, it's either go with the flow or shut the water off. I mean, it's unfortunate that they keep piling stuff on us. Rick?
Somebody left their pointer here. Rick Walters. I don't believe any of this stuff. Of course, that's just the way I am. That eight percent, is that on top of the fixed rate of the two funds, Fund One and Two? Are you taking eight percent of Funds One and Two?
Right, that's that additional dollar seventy, dollar ninety.
Then we're taxing, we're taxing again Fund One and Two, right? When it should only be taxed once.
So...
It should be separate, is what I'm saying.
And our proposal is it would remain separate, that SRF One and SRF Two would remain line items on your bill that don't...
Right.
...annually escalated. Only the remainder of the operating...
And what would that be? What number would that be? Excluding fifteen and eleven, so it'd be twenty-six dollars less than the sixty-four is what the rate eight percent would be based on.
We have, we have the rates right now that it would be a little over ten dollars for SRF number one and fifteen twenty-five for SRF number two, and that would be carried out continuously till the debt is...
No, no. What are you taxing the eight percent on? Are you using the Fund One and Two together to tax that?
When you say, when you say Fund One and Two, what are you talking, are you talking about the SRF debt service?
Yes, one and two.
No, that is, that doesn't go into the inclusion of the eight percent. When we're looking at, when we're looking at the revenue, we're not increasing the SRF. Those, those...
Okay, okay, that's all I want to know. You're not counting that again?
No, no, we're not adding a six percent on that, you know, as time goes on, we're not adding.
Okay.
That will stay a flat rate on your bill the entire time.
Okay, can I pay off the debt service?
There is one thing that Habib would like to mention on this.
Okay, again, our percent revenue adjustments is total revenue. So it's not looking at specific expenses. It's total revenue above your current revenue irrespective of what that revenue was funding. However, those, what is going to happen if someone said, in year two, I want to see the components that we showed for year one broken out again, you would see that the SRF loan number one and number two would not change, and the other components, the customer service, general administration customer service, and the flow component would change. And that would absorb the eight percent. But eight percent is not rate increases, is eight percent above your current revenue that then gets allocated. But it wouldn't, that eight percent revenue increase incremental amount is not going to get allocated to SRF number one and number two. Okay?
Did you want to respond to his question about prepayment of debt?
I would say that's a, that's a policy decision. I don't see why you cannot pay it off, but it would be a pretty significant number if you pay it upfront, the whole amount, so...
Maybe, Rick, if you could clarify for us, are you asking, could you as an individual customer...
Yes.
...pay off your share of SRF One and SRF Two?
That's correct.
So that you're not incurring the interest costs?
That's correct. That's fourteen hundred dollars for both of them.
It's technically possible, the question is, is it reasonable and feasible, the expense to create an individual rate just for you as a customer is a question? And so I would turn to our finance director as to, you know, will our rate software allow us to do that?
That's something that we would really need to examine and look into it and see if we need to establish new code in our system, if we have capacity to establish new codes. We need to do a little bit more research before we can, I would be comfortable making a statement one way or the other.
Could you bring the item back to us? Maybe we could look at it?
We can.
As a future item.
I'd like to have our attorney take a look at that as well.
So what I'm thinking is, it's about twenty-six hundred dollars, or twenty-six hundred dollars for less interest and everything for Loan Two. And I think if that falls under the senior one, it would be even less than that, somewhere around there, so that would be pretty good. Loan One would be even cheaper than that. I think it would be somewhere around nine hundred dollars, so that's not too bad. So you're looking at a write-a-check kind of thing of four grand. And then I'm out of your, I'm out of your system there. I don't, I'm not belonging to your system that can be moved, mooshed, or whatever you want to do with it. I just don't want to be part of that system, so...
So, Rick, just, if that was feasible, if we could do that, I mean, what I would foresee is that that would stay with the property, not with you, meaning that...
Oh, no, yeah, right.
If you sold the property, it would stay with the property. That rate would stay with the property.
Not if I paid it off, it wouldn't stay with the property.
Well, yeah, because in the future, so you've paid it off for the next seven years. Let's just hypothetically, let's say you paid off this twenty-year loan.
Right.
So let's say ten years from now, you decide to sell your house. You don't get a refund back of ten...
No, 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 no. I just add it, I just add, I just add it to the property to get my money back, so that's no big deal.
Hypothetically, I mean, what were you envisioning if that, if it was something that we could look at doing? I just wanted to make sure that, because in my head, it would stay with the property.
I'm looking to create more monthly capital.
Okay.
And if I want to refinance or do whatever I want to do, I refinance, get the necessary money and pay off the two debts, and I'm out, I'm out of your hair. You won't ever see me again.
Well, then I...
I need that in writing.
And would we save interest if we paid it off?
Excuse me?
Would we save the interest if we paid his portion?
If I paid it off, I'd save fourteen hundred dollars.
Well, if...
Off of both loans.
If our bank would allow us to pay...
Yeah. Or it to have any, any ability to impact, and I think there are some legal implications that we're going to want to touch on, but if you paid us your share upfront for the SRF loans so that you could avoid future interest, which is pretty low interest, two and four percent...
Yeah, right, it is, it is.
We would have to do an advance payment of that same amount on our SRF loans to avoid, because the interest is still accruing unless we pay that down. And I know the state isn't real excited about us making variable payments over the years. They like to see a nice steady payment stream. I'm not saying it's not possible. I think our debt service covenants allow for early payments, but I'm not sure they're anticipating individual customer payments.
I don't think...
I do want to make a comment. We're throwing numbers around here, what the payment would be, and we would have to calculate that out.
Yes.
And it's not fourteen hundred and it's not four thousand, I know that. But it's in the ballpark.
Well, we're...
You know, I'll just put it that way. But those numbers do not mean anything right now.
Right. No, they're approximate, just like your numbers on here are approximate, so are mine. Correct? Correct?
Some are, some are not.
Yeah, right. Okay, so here we go with Fund Number One. I don't know if you're aware of the fact that we've been paying for that since 2005, and we've accumulated paying all of that. We've come up to twelve thousand one hundred and seventy, I mean, twelve million one hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars that was collected prior to the first payment of the first loan on 2011. We then got an additional one million eighty thousand, which made the total income of that thirteen million two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Here's my question. Are we going to get rebated back for that extra money that we paid in? Because we are paying the debt service off, and for twenty years, that's already started. We've had seven payments of that. This is the extra money prior to us paying that off. Are we going to get any rebate back for that extra money that's in there? The reserves are nine point eight million. Of that nine point eight million, approximately, eight million of that is attributable to this.
I would like to take an opportunity to go back and do a little research on that. As you know, I've only been here with the city for about a year, and I'm not really that familiar with this particular accounting. I'd rather take a look at the books before I make any statements on it.
Maybe you could meet with Mr....
Here's...
...or get his questions, so...
Yeah, just, yeah, as Mark noted earlier, you know, the city recognized that the costs came in below, good for the city, came in below what sort of the worst-case estimates were when the rates were established, and so they did do a rate reduction back in 2011.
Well, a rate reduction, but this is extra money. I'm not talking about rate reduction. This is extra money.
Well, all of it's included in the reserve analysis.
Mark agreed with me that this extra money is due us, the citizens, and that could equate, in our conversation we had, it could be six to seven years of debt service payoff that's due back us. That's what I'm saying. In here, in this, it calls for Fund Fifteen, and it has the amount that was deducted. So it's in your paperwork, you just have to go back to 2005 and six, all the way to 2010 and 11, prior to our payment, and you'll be able to find out that there is thirteen million dollars there, of which five million was used for studies and all that other kind of stuff that you do with your game here that you play, so, which left about eight million dollars. So that's where I'm coming from. Now, the second thing, and I hope I have enough time, is to...
That was up a while ago, but we'll let you proceed.
Thank you very much.
Could I make a comment on this? Kind of right, kind of not right in our discussion.
There we go.
We did, we did, I mean, the city did start collecting monies early to pay off a future project. I don't know if it's 2005, I wasn't here at that time, so I don't know when it started. But I do know when I got here, our reserves were so strong, the project was under budget, that that's why we did a reduction. And we didn't do a reduction on the eleven dollars they were paying, we just did a reduction on the base rate that was being paid. So that reduction came in because we had some hefty reserves that would take us, you know, for the next several years. And the reserves are still there, the money's still there, so the money that we have collected is part of the reserves that we have. And that's just a simple way of doing it. So when Mr. Walter said that I said that it belongs to the customers, all of our money belongs to us. That's, it's our, it's our, you know, our stuff. Being refunded would mean that we'd have zero, or we'd have a lot less reserves. So at this time, our rate study, our cost of service study, is looking at our position today and estimating what our position may be in five years. That's what we're doing with the cost of service.
So the cost allocation plan that you don't want to move on in the wastewater account, it's five hundred and fifty thousand that you're taking out this year, I believe? If you could dedicate that five hundred and fifty thousand for twenty years, that's eleven million dollars. If you took that eleven million dollars and subtracted it from the thirty-one million that you, for SRF Two, that would reduce it down to twenty million and then get the loan on the twenty million. That would help us out tremendously. You wouldn't have to do anything else. The payments that are paid from that can come out of our property taxes to pay for finance and everything else, which it should do in the first place. I've often said that it's illegal for the cost allocation plan. So the property tax is designated to pay for that stuff. That's pretty much all I have to say, is that I hope you allow me to pay off this loan so I can get the heck out of this quagmire that you're in.
Okay. So I guess that's all we've got on any discussion. Any more discussion, council? Did I forget anybody in the whole universe that wants to speak on this? Okay, then we'll move on.
Before we do move on, could we have staff summarize the issues that are going to be coming back that we discussed? Would you mind doing that?
You know, because there were so many things, may I make this recommendation? I have already directed us to look at the whole video and take every little piece, put a memo together, and we're going to pass it around, department head, city manager, make sure we've captured everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're down to comments by, the city clerk's report. Got anything, Tina?
No, I do not.
Oh, okay. Comments by staff, we'll start with you, Emily.
Thank you, I don't have anything further to add tonight.
Steve?
A quick update, construction continues on Fourth Street. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll start to see some pavement and landscaping occurring, and then hopefully in August, we'll be on the home stretch and have a little different look downtown and can sort of move some of our street fairs and things to a new venue with some nice promenade sidewalks and additional areas that will be visually enticing. We also, this past week, started initial drilling for the new deep well that'll be going in at the industrial water treatment plant, and we got the conductor casing installed. That's the seal that goes initially down to around a hundred feet or so. And now this week, they've actually started the production hole inside of that. It will eventually go to seventeen hundred feet to try to get below some of the arsenic and other-ish elements of concern, and will lower our long-term operating costs, let us retire some higher arsenic wells and solve our problem at the wastewater treatment plant with having to remove arsenic effluent. And so if anybody wanted to drive out to the end of the road out there at Live Oak, west of Industrial Drive, just before you get to the railroad tracks, you'll see a drill rig working, and council members wanted to come out, we'd be happy to put you in a hard hat and show you what that's all about.
Thank you. I do want to say something. I think that it's nice that it is moving along really well at Fourth Street, and that's something that actually the whole town can see. So it's really great because people are driving by and go, oh, wow, stuff's going on, because a lot of stuff you can't see, you know, that we're working on. And I think that whoever's doing it's doing a great job. You're right, they're moving along really well.
Some days it feels like, how come they're not doing more? Well, they've got a lot of form work, and now they're doing the stamped concrete, that's a little more intricate work, but it's going to, I think, be a real nice finished product that'll...
It looks good.
...help beautify that. Maybe one more quick announcement?
Oh, you can do that.
We've got our June water conservation numbers. And this is the test month. We were in triple digits for two of the four weeks.
Yeah.
And the city's still at twenty-eight percent over the prior two-year usage, so...
Great.
Go GALT!
Yeah.
That's amazing.
It's hot. Mark? Is that it for today?
Yes, I've done enough. Okay, thank you.
Cora? Hey, Cora? No, Armando?
So on July 25th, San Francisco Giants has Law Enforcement Appreciation Night. For the last five years, they've honored Officer Kevin Ton, and this year, they're going to do the same. And so I will be there at the game, and there's going to be a big ceremony before the event, so that's going to be amazing. Along with the Ton family, they'll also be there.
Yeah.
And then on August 1st, National Night Out, so I invite the public to come out. Amazing event, every year it gets better and better, and we have some surprises this year that I'm not going to reveal.
Okay, that sounds cool. Gene?
Nothing more to add.
Kimberly?
Nothing.
Hey, I'll start with Lori.
So June 28th, 29th, and 30th, I attended the League of California Cities Advanced Leadership Workshop for council members and mayors, and attended a presentation on preparing for earthquake, what cities can do, and making housing more affordable, how to set goals for city... for city managed performance evaluations, and it was good, it was good. Donna attended also, and Tina, and our city manager. So, the other thing is, is that I will be going next Monday. So, are, you're not attending? The, the cast is going with the school districts to, cast members, okay. So, we're going to tour a facility that John Gordon from the elementary school board liked us to see. It's a joint-usage facility in another area, in another city.
Nice.
Be going to that.
Mark? Is that it?
Yes, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
That Mark's done.
I screwed it up last time, so I just want to make sure.
Look at her, I bet you...
I have nothing special, other than I just wanted to praise, again, Parks and Recreation and Armando for the IDC.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Every year, it gets better, and the number of people we see, a lot of them aren't from the city of Galt. It really impresses me, and they come here to see both our IDC parade, and they stick around for the fireworks, which were...
Great.
Beyond, yeah, exactly.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I think this is the busiest we've, the crowds that I've seen in, since we've started. On August 17th, I'll be providing you a revenue and cost report and go over a lot of the events, so...
That's all I've got.
Kurt?
I think...
H?
Well, Kurt and I attended a meeting with the CSD Board, or two board members. We had a... Thank you for confirming that. And we had a, we're going to work on some partnerships, and it was a very good meeting, meeting the new chief. And don't forget, we have a tour of the training facility on Thursday, which a lot of the council members and are going to, and it should be exciting. And I would also like to put on the agenda to give 500 of my discretionary fund to the beautification committee, please.
And last, but certainly not least, I did want to say that the Independence Day festivities were really great, fabulous. I'm sad to say that it's Brenda's last year who's in charge of the parade, so I think maybe we should give her some kind of commendation or something, maybe at the meeting. Do you already do?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Talk to the city manager about that.
Okay, fabulous. Okay? All righty, okay. Adjourn.